Everyone, welcome to the Springfield Township Board of Trustees Public Hearing. It is April 3rd, 2018 at approximately 5:30 PM. Mr. Burning, may we please have the roll call?
Yes, Mr. Burning?
Present.
Ms. McFarland?
Present.
Mr. Honolaw?
Present.
All the trustees are present.
This evening, we're here to consider two zoning cases. The first case that we're going to consider this evening is case number ZC 2018-00110031, or it is at 10031 Corbett Road. And this is a request seeking approval under the Springfield Township zoning resolution for a zone map amendment from R1 residents to CPUD commercial planned unit development. The applicant is Mr. Terrence Stevenbacher, and he is also the property owner. This is for the property, as I said, at 10031 Corbett Road, Cincinnati, Ohio. And it is comprised of three parcels in Section 22 Township 3 Range 1 of Springfield Township. The subject parcel's on the east side of Witten Road at Corbett Road, and the applicant is proposing to rezone the property to a commercial planned unit development in order to allow for construction of a retail establishment. Mr. Gilbert will present the staff report this evening and will answer any board questions. Mr. Gilbert, do you have your report?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Honolaw. As indicated, the applicant, Mr. Terrence Stevenbacher, is seeking a zoning map amendment from R1 to CPUD for the property at 10031 Corbett Road. The applicant is proposing to rezone the property to commercial planned unit development in order to allow for the construction of a retail establishment. As depicted on the submitted site plan and application, the applicant is requesting a zone map amendment, as indicated, to allow for the retail establishment. Currently, a seasonal produce stand sits on the southernmost parcel of land with a residential structure to the north. The subject parcels are bordered by residential with an educational use to the east. A similar application was made by the applicant back in '16, but was rescinded by the applicant due to various reasons. The applicant now is proposing an updated two-phase construction of a 7,100 square foot market and grill. Eighteen hundred of that square, eighteen hundred square feet of that 7,100 is actually storage in the basement. Including, the development would also include a 1,000 square foot storage building. Parking and access for the retail establishment is shown and as accessible from Corbett Road only. You can see here on the site plan, bring it down a little bit. This is the 1,000 square foot accessory structure. Everything you see basically here in this area, and I apologize if you can't really see that where I'm pointing, but this area here, as well as the market and the driveway here, would be constructed in Phase 1. As you can see, the ingress and egress is here off of Corbett to the north. The ingress, I'm sorry, the egress to Corbett on the south is a right turn out only. The applicant is proposing to develop the site in two phases, as indicated, with the accessory structure being done in Phase 1 to allow the market to operate in '18 while the Phase 2 construction happens and being proposed to be open in 2019. The site plan depicts the location of the building and parking areas, and it shows a total of 24 parking spaces, which meets the minimum required number per the zoning resolution. The applicant and the architect have met with the Hetham County Engineers' Office to discuss consistency with the therapher plan. No concerns were raised by the Engineers' Office. However, they did indicate they wanted that ingress, I'm sorry, that egress to the south to be right out only due to site distance issues. They have applied for a variance to the therapher plan, and the county Engineers' Office has recommended approval of that variance to not require any additional right-of-way be dedicated for this development. As part of the review process, the board should determine if the applicant's request is consistent with the township's land use plan and development strategies for the property. I will say that, obviously, the Board of Trustees, as you're aware, adopted the Comprehensive Neighborhood Master Plan update last, or actually in 2016, and this particular property was designated as retail for this purpose. The plan depicts the subject properties as retail, as indicated, and it is recommended for approval by the County Regional Planning Commission because of that fact. But review of the proposed change in use and its potential effects on surrounding properties should still be considered if there are any. And in reviewing the application, the board should also give due consideration to any concern raised by neighbors. I will show, again, this is the accessory structure here to the north. The southern portion here in green is the proposed market and grill, and with an outdoor patio area here. So the grill would be open, as well as the market, year-round. The grill, as proposed by the applicant, would serve fresh sandwiches and soups and salads with an outdoor patio area in the summer months. Looking at the architectural design of the building, you can see here, they are proposing a stone, sort of brick, building with some sort of stucco material on the upper half of the building. They are showing a standing seam metal roof for the structure with, you can see the cupolas with a lot of light to allow light to penetrate both the market and the grill during the daytime. The Springfield Township Zoning Commission did hold a public hearing on March 6th of this year and recommended approval of the zone map amendment to this board with the following conditions. One, that lighting, landscaping, and signage plans shall be submitted as part of the final development plan process for Phase 2 of the project. That a dumpster enclosure shall be constructed of similar materials and light colors of the proposed building. Three, that the applicant shall adhere to all requirements by the County Engineers' Office regarding traffic ingress and egress, which they have coincidentally. And then lastly, that all other zoning requirements, unless otherwise noted on the submitted site plan and/or approved by the zoning commission, shall be in accordance with the township zoning resolution, which is pretty standard. So with that, pretty straightforward application, I would entertain any questions by the board at this time, but the applicant is here as well to answer the questions.
Which phase is first?
First phase would be the accessory structure here, as well as this parking lot in the driveway here out to Corbett Road. Second phase would include the market grill and this parking area.
Okay.
Is that still going to be a no-left turn?
This, if... That'll come later.
So my understanding is it's going to be a year-round business? And what do we know yet, what maybe the hours of operation are going to be? Or is it going to be seven days a week?
I think it's typical retail hours, but I would defer that question to the applicant. And just to clarify, as someone in the audience indicated regarding, yes, the intersection here at Corbett would remain a no-left turn onto Corbett heading south on Witten. So if you're heading south on Witten, you would still not be able to turn left on the Corbett. That would still remain a traffic restricted movement by the County Engineers' Office.
Well, the good thing is that there's no egress or in and out from Witten Road, so it's all on the back on Corbett, which is good.
Okay. Any other questions of the board of staff?
No, we've talked about it.
I have no other ones.
Are there any opponents here this evening that would like to address the board concerning this zoning case?
I guess first, and I apologize, the order of the meeting here is a little incorrect. I would ask if the applicant...
Have the applicant speak. Would, Mr. Stevenbacher, would you like to make a presentation to the board?
Sure.
Sorry, Mr. Honolaw.
First of all, I want to thank you for holding this meeting tonight on our behalf and this other project as well. But our vision for this site is a fresh produce market and a grill where during the season of homegrown produce, we would introduce into the menu lots of fresh items, fresh salads, soups, sandwiches, those types of things for breakfast and lunches. We do not plan on opening the grill for dinners, but we do plan, however, to have a creamery for the evening hours, where people can come and buy fresh homemade ice cream. So that's kind of the vision. We want to be a part of the community. We want to enhance the community as much as we can. Over the last two years since we've operated the fresh produce market along Witten and Corbett, we've been able to really establish a lot of strong positive relationships in the neighborhood, and that's something we want to continue to do in the neighborhood for the many years ahead. That's kind of our whole vision for this, this particular site. And to answer your question, you know, we do plan on opening probably around 7:00 AM in the morning. We would close the grill roughly around 2:00, and the produce market would stay open from 7 till 6:00 in the evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions, any questions of the applicant?
No, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenbacher. Okay, are there any opponents of this case that would like to speak to the board? It appears for the record that there are not. Do we have any proponents of this case that would like to speak for the record? We'll let the record reflect that there are no proponents either. We will now close the public portion of this meeting for board deliberation. You know, I don't know, I've had a chance to study this plan. I think it's a, you know, I think it's going to be a positive thing for the community. Just seeing that the old house go and the whole corner get cleaned up in the last week or two has been, I think, a positive thing. And if there's one thing I know in Springfield Township that I hear over and over from people is we need more food choices and places to go and, you know, something, you know, a little healthier than everything else is up and down Witten Road, yeah. So every, we have every fast food, you know, known to man, just about, but, so, yeah, I think it'll be a plus for the community in the long run.
I'm looking forward to the opening of it.
I like the fact that it's going to be initiated with phases so that as they can begin operations like they normally have in the spring or summer, and then continue business while there's construction going on completing the grill. And, Mr. Stevenbacher, when you said something about a creamery at the end, I don't know, I had this flashback. I was raised in Clermont County on a farm, and when you go up to, up toward, let me see, up through Dayton, Xenia, they have this farm where they have ice cream, fresh ice cream. So when you mentioned something, I'm like, well, maybe they'll have outdoor animals or something, I don't know. But I think that's a great idea, because I'm a health nut as well, and I like fresh produce, and I always hate to go way into another community just to get fresh produce. So I think it's going to be a win-win for all of us here in Springfield Township.
Can I just add just one more thing?
Yes.
Again, part of our vision...
And our desire, because currently, every produce item, an item that we sell, we also list, both at the market and on our Facebook page, the health benefits of eating that item. And we try to promote that to the people, because it's amazing when you really do your research about what you eat and the health benefits of many things that are out there. It's no wonder why today there's so much cancer and different types of illnesses is because of our diets, usually. And we're usually eating cooked and prepared foods, in which a lot of the antioxidants and health benefits are destroyed. So that, you know, we're not health nuts, but we certainly do want to produce, promote healthy living and healthy eating at our market and grill. So that's part of our vision as well. Thank you.
One final question I had, and excuse me if it was said and I didn't pick up on it. What is the timeframe? So the first, you know, we saw Phase 1. Is Phase 2, is that, when do you think that will be completed?
Our goal is to open Phase 2 the spring. We'd like to be open by May of 2019. That's our aggressive goal.
Okay, very good.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I would like to just reiterate to the board, this particular zoning amendment request does comply with our adopted Township Land Use Plan and the Comprehensive Neighborhood Master Plan that was adopted by this board in 2016.
Right.
It also seems to comply with our Witten Wood Corridor architectural designs. When I look at some of the architectural design of the building, you know, that's being developed, which is what I liked when I read through that. I don't know if you were aware of that, but it seems to kind of go along with what we have designed in our...
It does, except that our overlay district doesn't extend this far north.
I know, I know.
But inadvertently, it actually does.
Thank you.
Okay. Based upon the comments, do we have a motion to approve the zone map amendment with these staff conditions?
So moved.
Seconded.
Mr. Burning?
Aye.
Ms. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Honolaw?
Aye.
Motion carried.
With that, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing for case ZC 2018-001 for 10,031 Corbett Road. The board will consider a resolution adopting the motion that was just passed here tonight at our regular trustee meeting, which will be on April the 10th, 2018.
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's closed.
All right. Thank you. You got through this, this phase of the process. Next this evening, we have a second zoning case, and I would like to call to order this second public hearing. It is approximately 5:50 PM on April 3rd, 2018. And this is going to be a Springfield Township Board of Trustees Public Hearing regarding zoning case 2018-2, which is the property located at 750 and 768 Fleming Road. Mr. Burning, may we please have the roll call?
Yes, Mr. Burning?
Present.
Ms. McFarland?
Present.
Mr. Honolaw?
Present.
All the trustees are present.
We're here this evening for zoning case ZC 2018-002, which, as I said, is for the property located at 750 and 768 Fleming Road. This is a request seeking approval from the Springfield Township, or excuse me, seeking approval under the Springfield Township zoning resolution for a zone map amendment from R2 Residential to CPUD commercial planned unit development. The applicant is Mrs. Sarah Durio and Al Nier LLC. The property owner is Scott and Karen Sumi, who live at 750 Fleming Road. And as we discussed, this is for the property located at that address, which consists of two separate parcels here in Springfield Township. The site description's on the north side of Fleming Road at Witten, at the Witten Road intersection, and the applicant is proposing to rezone the property to a commercial planned unit development in order to allow for the construction of a medical office building. Mr. Gilbert, do you have a staff report for us this evening?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Honolaw. As indicated, the property's at the northeast corner of Fleming and Witten. The tract size is almost one and a half acres. It has 215 foot of frontage along Witten Road and 269 foot of frontage along Fleming Road. The current zoning is R2 Single Family, and the particular request is to change it to a commercial planned unit development in correspondence with the adopted Township Land Use Plan. As depicted on the submitted application and site plan, the applicant is requesting the zone map amendment to redevelop the existing site into a medical office building. Currently, a single-family house sits on the western parcel, and a detached garage sits on the eastern parcel. You can't really see it here based on the site plan, but if I go to Cages and, let me go a little south here. This is the site we're talking about right here. This is the two parcels that make up the request. Here's the detached garage on the eastern parcel, and obviously the house on the northeast corner of Fleming and Witten sits here. The subject parcels are boarded by R2 Residential and CPUD Commercial Planning and Development to the south. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing home to construct a one-story, 12,000-square-foot medical office building. The applicant's letter states that the medical office building would offer primary care and OB-GYN services. The applicant letter also states that the building would be approximately 20 feet tall and facade would be constructed with brick and stone per the Witten Road Corridor Overlay Design Guidelines. The applicant's proposed site plan, as shown here, go back to it here, as well as the adjacent parking area, shows approximately 60 parking spaces, three of which are ADA compliant, and that meets the minimum required per the zoning resolution. The ingress and egress are shown on both Fleming and Witten, with the existing driveway onto the property from Fleming being removed and moved further east on Fleming Road, and that the applicant's plan notes that the construction would be completed in one phase and concluded within a two-year timeframe. I would indicate that this particular access on Witten would be a right-in, right-out only, as per the county engineer. Full access would be here on Fleming, allowing access to the light. A grading utility plan was submitted showing proposed catch basins. Let's see if we can pull that up. Here we go. Apologize, this is slow for some reason. You can see it here. They are showing catch basins here to the, really the northeast of the site to help with some existing drainage issues here, which would be brought to the south and to the west, captured in their underground detention, and then slowly released into the existing storm shore. They are showing a mounding and landscaping plan here to the east to buffer the property owner that's immediately adjacent to the east. And they are also showing in their landscape plan a lot of landscaping here to buffer the parking area from the view from Fleming as well. The Hetham County Engineers' Office has informally reviewed the applicant's proposed site plan and have no concerns regarding ingress and egress at this time, other than that one requirement that the ingress and egress on Witten be a right-in, right-out only. The applicant has made a request to the County Planning Commission regarding a variance to the therapher plan. Basically, what that means is that they are requesting that no additional right-of-way should be dedicated, and the County Engineers' Office agrees with that request. And the County Regional Planning Commission, in reviewing this case on March 1st, did recommend denial for what we refer to as a technicality. As the board is aware, the County Planning Commission, by statute currently, is required to review all zone amendments in unincorporated areas of the county. In regards to that, they look at the township's adopted land use plan to determine consistency. In this particular case, the township's land use plan calls for this particular property here to be office into the future. So the proposed zone map amendment does comply with our future land use plan for this particular parcel. This particular parcel to the east is not included in that land use plan recommendation as office. Staff is aware of that fact, and honestly, given the adoption of the land use plan in 2016, I think it was assumed that, given these two properties were under the single ownership, that both parcels would be developed together as an office use into the future. Additionally, our township zoning resolution allows for parking to be located on adjacent residential properties that are contiguous to and principally serve a commercial use that's adjacent to it. So what I mean by that is, in looking at the site plan, and you can basically draw your imaginary line right here, which is where, just to the east of this yellow box here where the building is, that's the property line that splits those two properties. They could remove this portion, this eastern property, from their recommendation or their request for zone map amendment, and it could stay as zone residential, but this site plan could be built exactly the way it's being proposed, because our zoning code allows for parking on residential property. So the fact that this piece of property here isn't included in our land use plan as office is immaterial to this request. That's a fact that the Regional Planning Commission frankly missed or chose to ignore, which is what led to their recommendation of denial. If they had considered that fact, then I would think that their recommendation would have been different. But as the board is aware, it is simply a recommendation, is a non-mining recommendation to this board, but I just wanted to bring that, bring that to light. Additionally, as we indicated, they have requested a variance to the therapher plan. As the board is aware, anytime there's a zone map amendment, the County Engineers' Office asks for additional right-of-way to be dedicated. In this particular situation, additional right-of-way isn't necessary for a couple of reasons. One, the county just recently went through an acquisition strategy with the current property owner a few years ago regarding right-of-way, and has worked out an agreement with that owner to allow the construction and widening of Witten Road, which is to take place this year. No additional right-of-way is needed for the plans that are already in place and are moving forward. Therefore, the county has indicated that they have no need for additional right-of-way. So the therapher plan would be, requirements would be met because of that. Additionally, the Witten Road Corridor Design Guidelines calls for buildings to be closer to Witten Road and parking to be in the rear. We had an informal meeting with the neighbors prior to the formal submission by the applicant, and it was, I think overwhelmingly favored by the neighbors, that the parking be closer to the road and not to the property owners. Therefore, the applicant switched the building further back from Witten Road, put the parking close to Fleming and Witten, to comply with sort of the requests of the neighboring property owners, in which frankly allowed for the buffering that you see here to the northeast and a little bit to the south in front of the parking area. So those are the three things that I think that the County Planning Commission frankly didn't consider, and weren't very prudent in their recommendation. Therefore, while they recommended denial of the zone map amendment, frankly, it didn't make much sense, only because I think mainly and predominantly because the application per our zoning resolution could be built as is, even without that parcel being rezoned. So as part of the review process, the board should give due considerations to any concerns raised by neighbors. Looking at the elevations of the building here, I think they tried to keep a low profile with the flat roof to minimize any visibility from adjoining properties, keep it at a low height in order to accommodate that. And then I would ask that the board, you know, give due considerations to the conditions that the zoning commission and their recommendation for approval, which they made at their March 19th meeting, that they be part of any approval recommendation by this board, if the board is so inclined. One, that the lighting plan shall be submitted as part of the final development plan, and that they shall utilize fixtures that are consistent with the Witten Road Corridor Design Guidelines and should be no taller than 15 feet in height, and shall have basically cut-off shields to join, to shield any adjoining properties from light exposure. That any dumpster enclosure shall be constructed of similar materials and light colors of the proposed building. And just like the other case, that, three, the applicant shall adhere to all requirements of the County Engineers' Office regarding ingress and egress. And that, four, and lastly, that all zoning requirements, unless otherwise noted on the site plan, shall be in accordance with the township zoning resolution. So that does conclude my staff report, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions of the board prior to the applicant making their presentation.
Two other questions of...
I don't.
Mr. Gilbert?
I don't know.
I had one. I think you clarified that as far as the right turn out of the medical building onto Witten Road. And I'm aware that there was a very extensive traffic analysis study done, you know, looking at, you know, the business hours and when the volume was high and when it was that low. But I just hope that... But I just hope that that right turn only signs are very prominent, because there's always going to be someone or two who's going to challenge that and turn left.
Well, just so you know, this particular ingress and egress will be right-in, right-out only, and it will be constructed to basically require that movement. What I mean by that is, they will be required to basically pour a concrete island in here to restrict that movement.
Okay. You didn't say that earlier.
Unlike that. It'll be, it'll be, it'll be much more pronounced so that it would be nearly impossible for someone to turn left in here.
More like Freddy's.
I've seen everything, so I'm not going to say it's impossible, because people do crazy stuff, but in this particular case, they will be required to construct a concrete island to basically...
Oh, I didn't hear that earlier, so I'm glad.
That'll be part of the construction documents that'll be required by the county. It'll have to restrict that movement to right-in, right-out.
Fantastic.
Chris, how high will that mounding be on the east, you know?
I want to say with somewhere between four and six feet, four feet, with, four-foot mound with evergreen trees and other landscaping shrubbery to completely conceal the property from the east.
And the neighbors who raised concerns were very pleased with the buffer, the design of the...
It's my understanding that the neighbors that were contacted by the applicant to show both their plans to address the existing drainage that's there, as well as the buffering concerns, they seemed, the meeting seemed to go well, and the neighbors were pleased with their response to their concerns.
Does the applicant have a presentation for us this evening?
Good evening. My name is Sarah Dury. I'm the architect with Al Nyer, and I would just like to explain sort of our process and how we got here. Probably the overwhelming driving force for the layout of the site plan was the desire to create a nice transition from the residential to the commercial areas on Wynton Road, which led us, as Chris stated, to locate the building further back because there's a smaller parking setback between the property line and parking areas than there would be between the property line and the building itself. So it allowed us to create the whole development area closer to Wynton Road and create a larger buffer on the east side, which is basically 50 feet wide. Additionally, it allowed the building to create a buffer to the neighbor to the north rather than having a parking lot against their house. So we worked through the, with the landscape architect to design the buffering along the north and east side. Chris mentioned the mound on the east side. It goes up gently and comes down. It's four feet tall, and then on top of that, we have evergreen trees that basically grow with the branches to the ground and can get up to 40 feet tall. And one of the concerns that was brought up at the neighborhood meeting that we had was that the trees are only about eight feet tall when they get planted, and then they grow up to be 40 feet, and that they obviously start as a much smaller diameter. So we went back with the landscape architect and added some big grassy plants that would be wide to fill in the gaps between the evergreens and the initial years on the east side. And then on the north side, we have evergreen flowering hedges that will get up to be 10 feet tall and will provide a nice buffer there. The other concern that was brought up with the neighbors was the drainage issue from the property on Ashford Court and then also the neighbor to the east. Chris has the drainage plan. Generally, the surrounding properties drain onto this parcel, and this parcel, the high point is at the northeast corner, and then it drains all the way down to the intersection of Wynton and Fleming. There's about a nine-foot grade difference across the site there. So what we've done, working with Cardinal Engineering, who is here tonight also to answer any questions that might arise, is we've designed the grading plan to go, you know, shed any water from those parcels that are coming onto our parcel would be shed down to the streets, basically, and taken into the catch basins. We've decided to go with the underground detention on this project instead of putting a detention pond in so that we could reserve that space on the east for the berming. And then we added the catch basins on the northeast corner of the site to, yeah, to take in any water that sits in the low part of that property line that right there. I know we have concerns right now. They have a lot of ponding in their yard today with the rain. So instead of having an uphill on our property, now everything will be downhill. It'll flow towards the street. It'll go into those catch basins, and then on either side of the berm, the drainage is going down. You can see the arrows with the little squiggles, so everything is being drained away from those properties. The other thing we did is add some taller plants. On the landscape plan, the parking has bushes that basically screen the parking from the street per the zoning code requirements for landscaping, and we were able to add some taller, taller ones in the middle. They're about four feet tall to provide additional screening for the neighbor to the south while still allowing visibility at the driveway itself. We did have the traffic study done, and in addition to the right-in, right-out on Wynton Road, they also recommended that we put a stop sign at each exit on Wynton and Fleming, so we'll be installing a stop sign there to help also manage the traffic flow. If you could bring up the building elevation, please. Okay. The design of the building itself was sort of a balancing act of trying to work with the brandage image that Christ Hospital has and that they're trying to put out there that represents their state-of-the-art medical care that they provide and cleaner lines, more modern aesthetic look, and then also balance that with the guidelines from Wynton Road and the adjacent residential areas. So while we did decide to go with a flat-roofed building to keep the overall height of the building down and then therefore more contextual to the neighboring residential buildings, in working with the township, we added, and it's, I apologize, it's hard to see in the rendering, but there's a cupola feature on top of the brick area.
I was looking for that, but I didn't see it. Where is it at?
It's there, right. It's right above the...
Above the Christ Hospital sign.
Oh, okay.
So we added that to bring in an element, you know, a pitched sort of element that references the pitch roofs along Wynton, and it's actually has some similar form to the signage out in front of this building. So we brought that in, and it also obviously is part of the Christ Hospital image. In working, discussing with the township as well, we have the brick that's very contextual to the Wynton Road area, and then we actually added a stone base between the brick piers and below the effus area that is, you know, more contextual in terms of material and scale and texture with residential buildings, and then with the aesthetic of the Wynton Road guidelines and areas, so. The dumpster enclosure, as mentioned, will be a brick similar to the building. We're working through a lighting design for the site to make sure there's no light trespass on the adjacent properties. Everything will be downlights, shielded, so there won't be any issue with light spilling onto the other properties.
What kind of signage will this project have?
There will be, a sign on the building is indicated where it says Christ Hospital, and then we anticipate that there will be a monument sign located towards the street. It's not shown on the site plan.
Yeah, it's not shown here, but my guess is it'll be somewhere right in the corner.
Right in that corner, okay.
And they would be required to come back before the township zoning department to make sure it complies with our zoning resolution.
Some sort of a ground sign?
Absolutely, yes.
What type of hours are you going to have there, or do they plan to have?
It will, I don't know the exact hours, but it'll be a typical daytime hours.
Okay, okay.
And what's the, just to feel for the thing, what's the staff at something like this, building this size? How many doctors, how many, or do you, maybe you don't know. Maybe I'm asking something you don't really know.
Yeah, I don't have that information, but it, I mean, we do understand it's primary care doctors and OB-GYN doctors, and most of them live within the township area.
Did you say just GYN, no OB?
OB-GYN and primary care.
Okay. So we have a fantastic fire department in case you have to have a baby delivered. They have all the latest technology.
Any other questions to the applicant?
I have none.
No. We do, we do have somebody in the, in the rear here that's raised his hand. Yes, sir.
Sir, if, sir, if you, just purely from a procedural standpoint, if you could come to the mic, just state your name and address for the record. I apologize, it's, we have to conduct it formally, so. Name and address for the record, please.
My name's Bill Wossey. I live at 751 Fleming. It's right across the street.
Right here, right?
Now, is this going to stay as Christ Hospital? It's not going to be changed somewhere down the line that it's going to be an urgent care or something like that? That's what I was, because I mean, this would bring in one type of clientele, but then another, you know, an urgent care would bring in, you know?
Yeah, if I could answer that to the, if I could answer that from a zoning perspective, because this is being rezoned to a planned unit development, any major change in the use that's being proposed would have to go back before a process which we went through already to date. So they would be required to resubmit a major revision to the PUD plan, both to the zoning commission and come back before this board again as well, before a major change in the use could be permitted. So to answer your question, it could be, but it'd have to go back before the process again.
And that would certainly be a time for joining property owners or the public to weigh in on whether or not it was good or bad, and, yeah, exactly. Okay. Are there, is there anyone here that would want to speak as an opponent of this case? Yes, sir. If you would come up to the microphone and state your name and address?
My name is Steve Hansi. I live at 744 Ashford Court.
So back in here.
Can you lower this down a little bit?
This is their site plan. I can go to the map.
No, that's okay. 744 Ashford Court. Karen, Karen and Karen are here. This is her own. Karen Cummins, they live here, and I live at 744 on Coliseum. And I'm here, and I say as an opponent, I'm undecided on this. I came tonight to voice my concern about the drainage, and they seem to have answered it. I mean, if they're going to slope it down toward the corner and keep the water out of there, because what happens, as the way it is now with the home there, this water comes down here, and it comes through the backyards of the homes on Wynton Road and our homes, and then it comes down there to Northern Hills Church of Christ across the street from St. Bart's, back in the back corner of my yard, and it backs up so bad, it's just the front yard and the sidewalk, but that's our backyard. And if you're not going to introduce any more water into that water plant, then, you know, we'll...
Hopefully, hopefully what they're doing will actually help it, I hope.
Yeah, well, it's my concern. That's my concern, is, you know, right now, time to rant, and to be honest with you, and this is not, have anything to do with this, I'll come talk about it some other time, that should be alleviated, working with the people at the church. They put a sidewalk in from their parking lot to that second house they bought there on Wynton Road, and they burned it up. You know, we have to make a 18-inch hole there, but it bottomed next. And that, you know, my yard, every yard, it bottomed next all the way into the back. If we could get that tape care over, you know, I'm...
What did you say your last, your last name was again? Hence, Mr. Hanson, just so you know, I had our Director of Infrastructure and Development, Mike Gould, who works here as township staff.
See the guy who was out there tagging the property?
No, no.
Somebody serving.
But, but he, he's, he's worked, he's worked with the civil engineer and the applicant, and he has met, I think, with the neighboring properties that you've, that you've referenced, and he will be our staff that'll make sure that whatever they do from a development perspective does nothing but help the situation as opposed to adversely affect it.
I'm good with that.
And in fact, the catch basins that they've submitted are actually above and beyond what they're required to do from a development standpoint, and they've done that to help address it.
As long as you guys have gotten it addressed, that's good. I have one other concern. Is this the beginning of the Corbin Avenue move? Down, down the road? No, I think it's a legitimate question.
That is a legitimate...
My problem pops up to those properties on Main Avenue.
Mr. Hanson, that is a legitimate question, and it's my understanding that our land use plan stops commercial right here.
Right here.
And that everything, everything going north, everything, everything going north.
Fair question.
That is a good, that's a good question.
And the, and you guys were here for the previous meeting, and just from a planning perspective...
I didn't make the last meeting, that's why.
No, 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 I mean the previous case before this one tonight. So you heard about the case on Corbett Road, and you may think, well, that's commercial too now, north. Well, that is a specific piece of property because it was used for that purpose for decades now, not to mention the fact that it's across from the park and the school and things, so that was a unique situation. No, I know, I'm just, I'm, from a planning perspective, I'm trying to address the issue that I don't see it creeping any further north than this corner.
Mr. Hanson, thank you.
Well, we have a question.
Ma'am, could you come up and state your name and address?
I'm Karen Heben Street.
What was the last name, ma'am? She lives right here.
473 Ashford Court.
What's the last name?
Heben Street.
Sorry about that, I can't, I got to write this down.
You should know this name. I'm this famous artist. I have my own TV show. Anyway, I'm talking about the school across the street.
You mean St. Bart's? Okay.
Many times I've stood there on that corner to wait for my grandchildren across Wynton Road, which I thought was pretty insane to start with when I moved here ten years ago, but now that intersection is going to be really much more congested, and those kids are coming across that street. I just thought I'd bring that up because I've seen near hits several times. And of course, you know about the woman that was killed down the street?
That was in front of...
Right over there.
Right, further down the street, yeah.
And now we've got more congestion, and Fleming Road is getting to be a lot like Wynton Road. I don't know if you guys are aware of that. It's, this, this little, this is a little corner, and that Fleming Road's going to become wider, and Wynton Road is now becoming wider, and there's that school, and you're dumping all this stuff right here on this corner. I just wanted to bring that up to you, because you're going to, you're definitely going to see a lot.
You know, what's your last name again?
I'm just concerned...
I looked at the traffic impact study that was done. It was very, very extensive, and it took into consideration the times when the, when the business hours, when it was busier, and when the times were less busy, and then back again in the evening. And the study was very extensive, and I think when you look, your point is well-taken. I think that with the fact that, which is my concern, that the one exit onto Wynton Road is going to be a right turn only, that alleviated some of my concern, and that they have it in such a manner that you cannot try to turn left, you have to turn right. So I thought that helped, would help de, you know, minimize some of the concerns as well.
There's a drive off to Fleming. So is that the only entrance? You can only enter there, or you can also leave there?
You can leave there.
You can leave, enter or exit. There'll be both. The only thing that's different is on Wynton Road, if you're coming out on Wynton Road, you have to turn right, and if you're coming in on Wynton Road, you have to come in and turn right.
You've got these kids coming across here, and then they walk along here. Is that sidewalks over there?
Yes.
We still have sidewalks. You just know that's what you're doing here. You're doing the, the kids are going to leave there. I mean, they're not my kids, but they're my neighborhood's kids, and they are little kids. They don't pay much attention to traffic.
And I hope that the school puts a crossing guard out there.
There at that drive. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Well, they'll be a stop sign, but yeah, I know what you're saying.
Kids don't, can't...
Just, just for clarification purposes, there is a representative here, I think, of the school, or at least he's...
Of St. Bart's.
Of St. Bart's, and if he would be so inclined to help maybe shed some light and address it from their perspective, I'd, I'd like to hear from him if the board would allow it.
Probably be a better person.
There we go. Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Michael Glassmeyer. I'm the maintenance supervisor for St. Bart's. Now, we have a John Paul II school is actually a separate entity, you know, but we are all both owned by the Archdiocese. However, with that being said, I do have to, you know, I'm in charge of the building and grounds. I look, that was our big concern when we first heard about this. So we keep an eye out, you know, we've been keeping an eye out, myself, Kathy Rothschild, who is our new... eye out myself. Kathy Rothschild, who is our new business manager, she's up at Vivian's, but she is our, for both parishes. And currently, at least for the past two years with the new physical education teacher, they've always crossed the students there with two teachers. So they come out, cross with them, then cross again with them for the ones going south on Winton after they cross over Winton. So there's always two teachers that are out there. Average count of the students, forty kids, and we're looking from, they're the first ones to go out. They don't even release the buses or the car drivers until they're, until they're gone. They don't even let them out of the building yet, you know, so. They leave right at 3:30. They're off property by 3:35. So as far as in the morning hours, we're only looking at two or three kids that actually walk in the morning to school that I see, maybe, but very much smaller numbers, so. Looking at that, just casual conversations with the principal there and other staff, and we didn't see as an issue. I mean, the kids do have to bear some responsibility. I know I do that to my kids. I actually grew up and still live within the Colrain Avenue corridor. You know, when I was a kid, we rode our bikes all the time down to the old Gold Circle Arcade when it was still there. Now, I wouldn't even let my, dream of letting my kids, you know, ride their bikes. That's life, but as far as St. Bart's is, and I'm speaking for St. Bart's indirectly for JP II, we didn't see an issue of that nature being, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
One other thing that's, at least everyone doesn't come in in the morning, like, there's not a hundred people working there, and they don't all come in in the morning and leave at five in the afternoon. It's people coming and going from appointments through the day, so it's not like the traffic is going to all be coming in at the same time and all leaving at the same time. There'll be people coming and going every probably fifteen minutes from the property. Because of it being a medical, you'll have different doctors being seen, and they'll let them out at different times. So it's not like everybody comes in the morning and leaves in the afternoon like, say, Cincinnati Financial Building where the old Kroger is on Winton Road. They don't have a lot of people working there, but they all come in at the same time and leave at the same time, whereas this will be people coming and going all day long.
Chris, and as well, the entrance and exit for that building has been moved more eastward from the original egress of the current owners that live there. Is that, did I see that correctly on the plans?
Yes, the current, the current driveway is here.
Yes, which is closer to Winton Road.
The further one has moved east over to here to get further away from the intersection, which should, should help the situation, honestly.
I forget the engineer to make that light change.
That's, that's a meeting for another day, Mr. Ryan.
I do think the concerns regarding drainage are important because the pictures that we were just shown so, show, you know, water runoff, drainage problems. We have this all over Springfield Township, you know.
And the county.
We, we do want the, you know, the applicant, you know, the, the contractors and, and our service director to work together to, you know, construct this in such a way to, to help mitigate that.
For sure, and I would, I would add, I think it's, it's, it's important to, to note that under the county development standards, when they apply for a building permit, the county public works office will look at this, and they have to show from a drainage perspective, from an engineering standpoint, that they're not creating additional runoff than what's already there today without capturing it in their detention, their underground detention. So they are required by regulation not to exacerbate the situation, and no additional runoff. They have to prove through calculations and engineering standards that no additional runoff will be created as a result of this development than what's already there today. And I would argue that what they've done from an engineering standpoint should obviously accomplish that, but then also, as we've indicated earlier, should address the existing issue that's there today as well.
Okay, we kind of jumped around here. Are there any, any other opponents to this? Are there any other proponents of this case that would like to speak? Or anybody else that just has a comment? We'll let the record reflect that there is not. We'll now close the, this portion, the public portion of this meeting for board deliberation. Well, any thoughts, any discussion?
No. I, I, I mean, we're all pretty, we all have talked about this with Chris and Mike at length, and are the...
My major, my major concerns was the traffic study and the traffic process and looking at, you know, and I was glad to see that it's going to be minimized to, you know, as far as exiting onto Winton Road, and I think that's, that's an asset right there. And I was not aware, but I always am concerned about storm drainage, and I think the gentleman that came up and spoke, I think his point was well-taken, and I'm glad that we've identified that it appears that that problem, once the process is completed and the engineering department, you know, has already looked at that, that there will be less problems, hopefully none.
And after it's built, we'll continue to monitor, you know, what's going on with the kids going by there, and also if, if you still have drainage problems or if they're exacerbated, you know, certainly let us know that that, you know, did or did not happen, because it shouldn't happen. What they're doing should help alleviate some of the problems you guys have today.
And I think it's important for the board to note, as you consider this case, and just from a precedent standpoint, from purely zoning perspective and being obviously staff, I have to point this out, is that from a zoning perspective, while traffic and obviously drainage are important components to consider in any development, from a purely zoning perspective, the, the purview of this process and in this board and reviewing this application as well as the one that we heard previously tonight is purely based on the land use aspects. So I think any decision that this board makes, obviously, the, the major consideration is whether or not the proposed zoning amendment complies with our adopted land use plans and, and policies. And if it does, and we move forward, then we can address traffic and drainage, but those components are ancillary to the real reason why we're here in this process is really to deal with the use and its compatibility with our adopted land use plan. So I just wanted to point that out for the record.
One of the things is, is when this case first came before us, and one of my concerns was the issue raised by one of the, by the gentleman here in the back of the room. Is this thing, is this stopping here, or is this something that's going to creep up Winton Road? And, and it was, Chris, to thinking about the, you know, the compatibility of issues, and given the fact that our land use plan is, you know, as, as a result of the, in the comprehensive master plan, the township that we have, I think it's, I think right here on this corner, it's okay. I do agree, I don't think, you know, that we want to see there be some creep all the way up Winton Road. We do have a medical office building, you know, right across the street to the south. A little bit further south, we have another medical, oh, I think it's dentist, a dentist. And then, of course, we get into the commercial. We have Freddy's across the street, the school, and so I, I think on this corner, I'm, I'm okay with the idea, but we would be with the, with the thoughts that this would be where it would, this would be as far as we would go with, you know, commercial office.
And I would say that, that, that opinion, that feeling is, is consistent with our adopted drainage plan currently.
Right, right. Any other problematic questions? Based on the general tone of the discussion here, do we have a motion to approve the zone map amendment with the staff conditions?
So moved. Second it?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, and with that, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing for case ZC 2018-002. We will consider a resolution adopting the motion that was just passed here tonight at our next regular trustee meeting on April the 10th, 2017.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, eighteen. I was, I was a typo and I caught it before.
It's a typo.
I caught it before, but I didn't catch it now. Okay. Do we have a motion to, to adjourn the meeting?
So moved. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thank you all for coming.